Okay, I'd like to get this meeting started. Welcome to the Regular Bangor School Committee. Today's Wednesday, March 23rd. If you could all please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, and I believe we have some recognitions. Superintendent Taggert?
Yes, we do. The Bangor School Department and the Bangor School Committee will recognize two National French Week media first-place winners. The American Association of Teachers of French, AATF, sponsored a student media contest to promote connections to Francophone themes. Students created short videos or interactive media submissions based on this theme. Ray Finney will introduce Kate Busco and Caroline Sada, who won first place for their documentary, Come Discover the French-Speaking World in Maine.
Thank you, Mr. Taggert. It is my honor to be here tonight to share with you the accomplishments of these two Bangor High School students. In November 2021, Catherine Busco and Caroline Sada submitted a video titled Venez découvrir le monde francophone du Maine to the 2021 American Association of Teachers of French National French Week Media Contest. Through this three-minute video, Kate and Caroline bring the viewer into a vibrant Francophone community of Madawaska, Maine. For anyone who has visited the St. John Valley, the mix of interviews and community visuals will revive la joie de vivre attitude of the area. Madame Schuling received notification that Kate and Caroline won the first-place prize in late February. For our benefit, Kate and Caroline have edited their original submission to add English subtitles, and I'll actually show that to you now.
qui est située au nord.
There's really kind of a rich history and rich French heritage in that area.
La communauté de Madawaska est longue.
My friends in high school and I used to joke, we always said we called, we spoke français, which is kind of a combination of French and English.
L'histoire de Madawaska est vraiment l'histoire des Acadians. Les Acadians ont été déportés par les anges d'Acadie et quelques gens se sont installés au nord du Maine où entrent leurs descendants aujourd'hui.
Madawaska est très bien de son héritage francophone. Par exemple, il y a un festival qui s'appelle Tan Tamar. C'est un événement où on crée beaucoup de bruit avec les instruments de la maison.
Nous célébrons le fait que notre culture est encore divine.
We're telling the British, "We're still here."
Une autre façon pour l'expression de la culture est la musique.
It's very similar to Irish music and, you know, that kind of folksy music, really grounded in a lot of bluegrass.
Le violon, la guitare, la trompette, les cuillères, les scous, et beaucoup d'autres. Ce sont les instruments de la tradition muscale.
La merveilleuse est une grande partie de la culture aussi.
Every time we'd have a celebration in our family, there was lots of food. One of my favorites is tappo sukk. It's literally sugar pie.
Le pot en pot, ça c'est un fricot de viande et de légumes.
I still eat ploies, they're the black wheat pancakes. Once in a while, we'll have like the Acadian chicken stew in ploie. That was a traditional meal.
C'est très important de préserver la culture avec les traditions, la nature et la musique, mais aussi de préserver la langue française unique au nord du Maine.
On parle français qui est un peu différent, mais c'est un grand français. C'est du français plus vieux que le français de Paris.
Le français de la vallée c'est un genre, c'est un lang. Et il y a des mots qu'on n'utilise pas dans le français standard. Et notre accent est différent aussi. On dit "la" instead of "la." "On" instead of "a." Pour dire moi, nous, au nord du Maine, on dit "oui."
Madawaska est vraiment un petit monde francophone qui n'est pas comme le reste.
Growing up in Madawaska, there's like a joie de vivre. You know, there's really like this feeling like when you get together with your family, there's music, there's, you know, it's a celebration, really. Lots of food, lots of music, lots of dancing, and just enjoying being together.
Okay, bonjour.
Bonjour, je vous rappelle que j'étais là et je suis contente et je suis...
When Madame Schuling shared the video with me, it immediately brought back personal memories of my childhood growing up in Canada and my time living in the St. John Valley when my children were little. In the video, I actually saw people that I know, people that were my neighbors and friends. Mrs. Ayer's Facebook post of the same video has actually, as of today, been shared 115 times. This video has been viewed in the United States, Canada, France, and Switzerland. And I can tell you that the people in Madawaska and around the world are all very proud of the video and the national win that it has achieved. My high school alma mater is actually Tan Tamar Regional High School, which is located on the shores of the Tan Tamar Marsh. Tan Tamar is the anglicized version of the word tintamar from the video. The Tan Tamar Marsh is the world's largest saltwater marsh and marsh system in the world and the last obstacle that the Acadians encountered as they tried to escape the British and deportation. To give some context to the size of this natural wonder, the Scarborough Marsh in Maine is actually 3,000 acres. The Marsh in Tan Tamar Marsh is approximately 50,000 acres. Of wetland, the experience is also a 50-foot tidal change every six hours because of the Bay of Fundy. Acadians who settled in the area in the early 1600s tamed the marsh with a series of dams, canals, and dikes which they destroyed to prevent from being followed while creating a hazardous landscape for the British to navigate. The word tintamar comes from the sound of the rushing tidal water and the flocks of migratory birds on the marsh. It translates to make a joyful noise or a racket, depending on your translation, of course. At this time, I'd like to ask Madame Schuling to come to the podium and say a few words.
I did notice there was a little bit of a lag on this one, so I apologize to all of you who couldn't really, maybe even read the subtitles, but at least I think on this one you were able to really see it well. Tonight, we're recognizing two very insightful and talented students for having highlighted the history, culture, and traditions of our past and current-day French-speaking Mainers. A very special thank you to Sharon Eyre and André Roy. I don't think they're here tonight, but they were certainly willing and eager to share their stories with our filmmakers. And to Ray Finney for spreading the wonderful news of their first-place award and helping to recognize and celebrate our French-speaking heritage here in Maine. Merci beaucoup à tous. Merci.
At this time, I'd like to ask Madame Schuling, Mr. Butler, would you please join Mr. Taggert and Chair Hassanian for a presentation of certificates? I also ask that everyone make a joyful noise for these students' great accomplishments.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Caroline Sada.
So we have so much to be proud of. Thank you again.
Thank you.
No, we do not.
Excellent. And so we have public comments. Just a quick reminder that members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Complaints or allegations concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or to debate with speakers during the public comment period. The superintendent or his staff will follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. Before starting, please state your name in place of residence. Do we have any public comments tonight? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Next, we have superintendents' proposals and updates, action items. We have a first reading of FY '23 budget.
Business Director Jerry Hayman will present the first reading of the FY '23 budget. I'm recommending that you receive the first reading of the FY '23 budget.
Can you pack it before the budget package? There was a page that had income guidelines for free and reduced lunch that I would like you to take a look at and just to get a feel for the income parameters set on each one of those. It's very important. All right, so what am I doing?
Just hit the spacebar.
Yeah, all right.
Can you have it?
No.
Service this one. I think it should.
Okay.
Blue for you.
Got it. So this is the first reading. And just so you all know, we'll obviously take all your thoughts and comments and concerns. I'm also tweaking some areas I found as I go through this packet. We have another opportunity a week from tonight to do a second reading, and by then we should have a fine-toon budget, if you will. So tonight is the, last time was a draft, this time is a more refined version, and it'll really come home next Wednesday.
It's nice to be right.
So in the packet, we start off with a page about fiscal '21 expenditures and compares the city of Bangor against the state of Maine, and it lets you know that we are indeed putting our dollars into regular instruction and special ed, those type of items versus some of the other administrative ones. So that's the lion's share of our dollars, and you can see we're doing always, we do quite well. And on the bottom of the sheet is a average per pupil, and once again, we are also doing well compared to the state of Maine averages. And this is, the second page is a graph of the same numbers. So if you're a visual person, you can look at the graph and see the city of Bangor compared against the state of Maine for those same categories. So now we're going to get into the actual budget itself. And I apologize for the font size on the screen, it's kind of small. We start off with the revenue. It's always good to start off with how we're going to pay for everything. So what this does, the state sends a report out and it's, takes in consideration what the governor considers appropriate for school support each year, and it breaks it down between what the state, based on everything that you do, there's six pages of data, and they finally crunch it down to a number and say, all right, based on all your data, this is what the state of Maine chooses to support your school. And that is the, sort of the third row down. The header is state aid. So that's what the state is saying. We're going to support the Bangor school system currently for a total of $24,081,006.03. And as you can see in the dollar difference column, that is an increase from last year, which is very good news, of $1,443,185. Those are dollars we can use for all of our adjustments and additions and not have to raise any tax revenue to do so. So to pay for the rest, the state also looks at that same data and tells you as a city, this is the minimum you need to spend on your school system. And that's the very first line, it's the required local appropriation. They're saying, based on the data, the Bangor School Department needs to spend $19,665, and that can go up and down. So the rest of the funds, if we, we always have a budget that's a little more robust than just the minimum, we have to raise them as well, and it's called the local appropriation above required. So between the two numbers, that's what we're asking the citizens of Bangor to support the school system. And there's an up and down difference, but as you can see, the net is zero. So what we're doing is, on this package, is saying we are asking the city, citizens of Bangor for no additional tax revenue this year. And we'll go through the details very shortly. The other revenue sections we did not touch, they're smaller in nature, their tuition charged to students coming to the Bangor school system, and some other categories. We wanted the focus to be on the top section, so we left those alone. When they change, the dollar amount is not large enough to move the needle a lot, but so I left those alone, we usually do that. And down bottom, as always, we, there's a balance from previous year. What we're doing there is taking money from the fund balance from the previous year, $1.25 million, and adding it to the money available to support our school budget. We've been doing that for quite a while now, and it's a tradition, so every year we'll look at the balance at the bottom of how we're doing at the end of June, tuck that money away, and then you kind of recycle it for the new year. So in total, the budget we're presenting to you tonight is $53,73,324. And once again, off to the right, you can see the difference from last year, and it matches up obviously with the increase in the state of Maine, the state aid. The budget itself, with those numbers, increased 2.8%. So if you wanted a further definition on any one of those line items on the revenue, we have provided that to you on the next page, 1 through 21. If you, you wanted to know what the federal impact aid is, and it will explain that it's based on federal government, Bangor students, parents, either in active military or working on federal property. And it's a, so when I first got here, I wasn't familiar with that, and now I am, of course. But there's a nice definition on each one, it's pretty straightforward. Going forward, how are we going to spend the $53 million? State of Maine requires, it cares about their state budget categories only. We also look at our divisions, which are our schools and programs, but they're concerned with these categories right here. So what we've done is kind of flipped the money around, and once again, it totals the $53,73,324, shows the same increase with the same percentage. If you look down through the numbers, the largest increase is in regular instruction, which you probably would think it would be, and it is, it's gone up $738,000. Next is special education, and it's gone up over $363,000. Some of the other categories that are meaningful, student-staff support, it's gone up $413,000. System administration's gone up $250,000. Facilities management, I referred to this last time, it shows a big negative number. If you recall my explanation, last year we got some late good news from the state of Maine, and we received some extra appropriation, and we agreed to use $862,000 for our capital projects. And obviously, that was a one-time nice bonus from the state of Maine, but it's not there this year. So year to year, facilities management would have gone up $100,000 or so if you take that $862,000 into consideration. So it looks negative, and it is, but there's a good reason for it. So on the next page, what I've done, similar to the revenue, every line that's on the state categories, I've defined and given you a little bit of information on what's going on. I, I'm not going to read it word for word, but it shows you what is included in the categories, and I will hit on some of the major changes. And you're going to hear, some of the changes are repetitive because they hit throughout the budget. So we had increases due to salary and benefit adjustments. That's a common theme, you'll see that over and over again. And a lot of them, later on, you'll see, we increased our utilities based on the current market for electricity and natural gas. You'll see that comment when we get to the divisions and the schools. Almost every one of them has that same, same comment. So for regular instructions, we added several teachers, ed techs. I'm told it's ELL, not ESL, so I apologize for that. That was my learning today. I'll fix that in the next go-around. And we also added an alternative education science teacher, which will really benefit the, we hope increase the graduation rate for those students that was missing for a number of years. So we're proud to try to add that back in and get a complete alternative education program going. And also, in regular education, there's textbooks and modest increase to supplies. Nothing you wouldn't expect. Special education, I must confess, I did not write this paragraph. I got Director Babbin to write this so it made perfect sense in the special ed world. I am told over and over that there's, the amount of students coming in is increasing drastically, the number of high-special-need students is increasing drastically. You've heard presentations before you that state the same fact. We've, in this segment, we've added a teacher, we've added some ed techs, we've added a social worker. So we have, and I'm missing something. No, I got it. So we've added several positions in there to help with the additional amount of students. There's four positions that are new that are in this section. The next section, the career in technical education, that's funded not through the, per the state, that's not funded through the operating budget of the schools anymore, it comes through the resolve of the city of Bangor, and that will be presented to them next month. So there's an amount that's, needs to be raised locally to support the career in technical adult education piece, so the sending schools get an assessment from them, and I believe that amount is about $17,000. But you'll see it at the very last page, I believe. Other instructions, that's co-curricular, extracurricular, summer school, also has athletics in it, coaches, referees, that type of thing, uniforms. Has a very modest increase in that section. It was a little bit higher, we did some refinement. Other instruction overall, increased $55,000, which is a very small number compared to the $53 million of the budget. Next section, student staff support, that's where you find guidance counselors, nurses, libraries, those type of costs, technologies in this section as well. And you have your mandatory increased salary and benefits, annual adjustments, a lot of them as a result of collective bargaining that we went through last year. I mentioned that there was a guidance counselor, an additional guidance counselor, system-wide. And what was proposed, and we went with that plan, is we basically added a full equivalent of a guidance counselor, but we spread the guidance service around six or seven schools, so every one of them is receiving more guidance council support in the coming proposed year. So I thought that was very important. Some modest furniture, library supplies, books, technology has some needs in there always, hardware, software, but nothing extreme. We go on to the system administration, and that includes the school committee superintendent and parts of the assistant superintendent, the business office. And once again, there's modest increases. But it also has legal, it has audit in there, insurance in there. In the business office, I can speak, we've added a person. We have two very long-term employees. One is definitely retiring in June, or she's actually retiring in August, but we need to start cross-training. She's been here for 35 years, and she does have the payroll. We need to tap that and make sure we have a smooth transition so our payrolls continue. And the other one is my lead accountant. She hasn't given me a retirement, and I hope she keeps postponing it, but we're going to hire somebody to cross-train there and to document the procedures as well. We're trying to, we just can't dare have her just walk out the door with all that knowledge in her head, so we're being proactive. So those major changes there. School administration, that's principals and their clerical staff. And the increase in that section was $99,000, and once again, it gets down to salary and wages, and there is, that's a fairly minimal increase in that category. Transportation, I've came on, in five months I hit the COVID world. I haven't had a normal transportation year yet. I don't know what one looks like. So we kept the budget the same, and it'll be nice to see the transportation ramp up when all the uses that have, are slowly coming back to life, athletics, extracurricular activity, those type of things. We need, we need some folks to start driving in buses so we can actually fulfill everything we want to do. That's a continued lag on that, but, so I kept the budget the same, anticipating we would continue to ratchet up from where we've been. would continue to ratchet up from where we've been. We were well below that number and you can see the actual expended in fiscal 21 was 1.57 million. So you can see the dip caused by COVID. Facilities maintenance, there's your negative number we discussed earlier. We have custodials and maintenance in this section. They do all the, all the repairs to the buildings, all the cleaning, they take care of, make sure the heat stays on and the hallways are clean, the trash is taken out, all the repairs are done. And also this section houses all the utilities. So the major increase in the electricity and the natural gases in this section. Debt service, you heard me come before you many times over the last year, trying to do some major projects for the school department. We've successfully started the Bangor roof, the section that just won't sustain the proper weight load over the A and B wings. And that's going well, except for the rain, kind of put a damper on that, but we'll get through that. We also are doing a major upgrade to the electrical system at Bangor High School. Along with the electrical system, you've heard me, we need to, and you've approved a generator for that project. And the latest thing you've heard me talk about is the Vine Street heating system. And we've had some pre-construction meetings, we're ready to go when the whistle blows in June. And instead of two years, the contractor believes it can be done by August 26, which is amazing. So we'll hopefully get that done. And of course, the last one is Cameron Stadium that was finished a little while ago. So all told, those things are either coming on immediately or coming on soon with debt. So I increased it about a quarter million dollars anticipating those payments. And obviously I worked those into the budget and you'll see a similar increase next year when the rest of those projects come on. And then we'll be where we need to be for debt service. All of the expenditures, the two main things in that is we support the food service program for 25,000 dollars per year and the lunch aids are also in this section. So those two, it's a very small section, but those are the two main things in this There's a, next is a visual representation of those categories. So if you're, once again, a visual person, you can see the dollars put into bar graphs and you can see the large amount spent on regular instruction. And second is special education and on down the line. So we do this for every year. So you can see where the majority of the money is going. So what we, how we present it now is we take the same categories and we give you a little more detail because we can't get enough numbers. We love numbers, right, everybody? All right. So we're regular instruction. I've gotten some questions of what is in each section. So each year we put this together and it's kind of a cover page right there. And regular instruction is regular instruction, K through two instruction programs, alternative education, and I've got to fix that, but it's ELL now, and gifted and talented. So we take the numbers that we, you saw in summary in the state categories and break it down even further. And it's going to, I prepared the articles for tonight at the back of this packet, but you won't be voting on them tonight when we get a refined package. Each one of these categories will turn into an article that you'll need to vote on individually and pass. So I've done a sample of the article at the top of what it is, but you'll see it in the back as well. So this is regular instruction. It's the 22 million, 942, 831. It breaks it down between salaries, benefits, and several other categories. It shows you the increase-decrease of those categories. The, the one that sticks out, of course, is the salary and benefits. And that's a combination of regular salary and benefit, salary adjustments, but also all those positions that we've added that I referred to early and I'll summarize it again at the end. The next section is pretty straightforward, it's the special education. The section has the programs and the administration. I'm glad you brought that up. Because I was going to get to that eventually. It happens, you're very right, it happens in several sections and it's a combination of people changing packages, but more importantly, it's comparing this year against last year. And as I scrub the data more and more, I'm finding the estimates used last year were a bit too high. So you get a decrease when obviously people are enjoying health benefits.
Yeah.
We've factored in an increase. We'll actually know on Friday what the maximum increase is, but they won't tell us what it is precisely for another month or so.
Right.
But they'll tell us what it won't go over.
Okay.
Which is nice.
I mean, that does at least give you a ceiling, so.
So, so you're very right and you're going to see that in several sections and that's the same explanation every time.
Thank you.
And we will continue to scrub the data.
So, that's good. Thank you. In, yes, I just turned it on, thanks. So regular instruction on this page is separate from other instruction.
Yes.
And then on the, the page that I somehow didn't print out, but is this page, it shows other instruction as part of regular instruction?
Those are categories that, one I, it's not, it's probably not defined well. So let me work on that and tell you exactly what's included. They're very different things. The state is mighty particular about what is included and not included in each section. So I'll be able to come back and talk about the actual programs that are in other instructions versus this other instruction. So let me do that for you and get you a little clarity.
Thank you.
They're not the same thing, they're not repeating itself.
Okay, so they're two separate things.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you mind if I, just before you keep going, I'll just get my other question out of the way.
Okay.
I noticed also mileage reimbursement stayed the same for every category and I was surprised since we, I don't think that the government's released a 2023 standard yet for what the reimbursement rate would be.
Where are you looking?
On, and I might be misunderstanding what we're calculating mileage reimbursement for, but in most of the categories, or excuse me, in most of the, yeah, in most of the categories, there's a section for mileage reimbursement. And I noticed it didn't change for 2023 and I was surprised because I figured it would because I know typically the government will revamp that rate. I just wasn't sure if that's something we need to calculate. I know we're trying to keep it flat. I'm just trying to look for the holes.
What I asked the administrators to do is go in and they have, to input the budget, they have the 22 budget beside it.
Yep.
And then they have two years of actual beside that.
Okay.
So when they're doing it, they can see trending.
Okay.
And what happens sometimes is, you know, you may have 250, 350, but your budget of 500.
Right.
Okay, I'm going to keep it 500.
Okay.
So it might be one of those. I've done that myself.
We've all done that kind of budgeting. So I just was, again, just looking to see, I'm trying to keep an eye out for the things that, you know, maybe not getting looked at with mom eyes or whatever, I don't know, but.
So I would suggest that's what's going on. I've done it.
Okay.
All the sections that I pay attention to, I immediately glance to the left and see some actual trending before I make a decision on the budget itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I'm sorry, before we get too far into this, can I ask a couple of questions? One, I'm curious about the, I think it's the system administration, that's the school committee budget increase. Is that correct? And what I want to know is, I know the past two years, one of the things that's in the school committee budget is the attorney. And I know we've had incredibly high attorney fees.
Yes.
Because of contract negotiations and then also because of, you know, various situations that had happened the previous year. How come that's still so high and it's actually increasing? I would have thought that that particular piece of it would have gone down.
So which category are you looking at?
The system administration? Is it system administration or school administration?
School is system administration.
Because it's a 19%, it's an almost 19% increase. And you talk about that it's primarily turnover of long-term staff members, but wouldn't that also be a decrease because the longer you're with the school system, the more money you're making?
That goes back to the, my lovely narrative on the business office and my wanting to have people in place and cross-training for a period of time. We actually budgeted additional accountant all year long. One of the other retirees, she'll also get paid out her accrued 30 days of sick time, which is an amount. I believe we still have her in there at the higher rate, so there probably is some ability to adjust that down, but it'd only be several thousand dollars to the lower end of the pay category itself.
But in terms of the attorney, do we, do we still expect to have such high attorney bills this year or next year?
No, let me, here, let me flip ahead just a little bit. I don't have the, I believe I have the detail. I believe I kept the legal expenses here rather high, based on our past experience. We seem to be getting into more and more situations where the lawyers are needed. So I obviously budgeted on the conservative side. If there's, if you would like to lower that and just assume a little more risk, I'm more than willing to do that as well.
I guess personally, I'd really like to find out what we've spent the past few years.
Sure.
Because I know we had, I mean, we had the law firm that did the investigation.
Yes.
And then the negotiations, so I would.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on that, because I was looking at that too, 19% increase seems a lot, but just to clarify your comments, we're going to have this overlap of some people retiring and some staff on at the same time, so there can be this cross-training.
That's correct.
And then maybe eventually when folks have retired, that normalizes a bit.
Absolutely. You're spot on.
And then the, it looks like on page 18, the purchase services is 136, down from 138. Would that be in the legal services category? Because I think, I mean, if, if we're going to generate those costs, we're going to have to pay them, but I also would like.
That is where legal is, yes.
I would like to think maybe that it will be less, knowing if it's not, we're going to have to pay it anyways, so we have to pull it from somewhere, but maybe we optimistically try to all have a good year without lawyers involved and we can cut that down a little bit.
Because that, like traditionally, it has been a lot lower than that, right? Except for the past.
Well, it's been trending steadily in this budget as well as special education.
Right, but in terms of legal fees.
I haven't seen a decrease. So if, I'll show you the trend. It's, it's like an arrow. But if, that is the will of the school committee to do something more conservative, if we can actually do that, it's not a problem.
Yeah, that would be my.
We just put it on a list to follow up on.
Yeah.
Sure.
And also, to follow on Member Siktas' comments, I'd like to know why our legal needs are going up and if there's some systemic change that needs to be made or something that we need to look at. I don't know if you can speak to that or.
I cannot speak to that.
Yeah, okay. It might not be for a public meeting, I don't know, but.
Well, and I can, I can speak to that. I mean, it was very specifically when Dr. Webb left, she left, she did all of our negotiations. So because Superintendent Taker was brand spanking new to all of this, we decided as a committee last year that we were going to have to keep our legal fees up high in order to, to be a part of that. And every single time we meet, it's not only the legal costs, but it's also the legal cost per hour and mileage because our school attorney comes from.
No, it's near Portland.
Yeah, it's near Portland. So it's, there are some significant expenses plus, you know, I mean, like everything else, legal fees have gone up. But the year prior to that, it was the, the investigation and that was done by an outside firm that was, I mean, I think that was, that was, it's like 110,000 dollars.
More.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was at a significant cost again because the firm that we brought in, we had a, I mean, every time you bring an attorney up, you're paying 350 an hour just for the car time, so.
Yeah, I guess, if we could get it broken, that's hopeful. If we could get it broken down.
Bye.
I mean, because it sounds like you're concerned that the costs are going to stay high, even though we don't have those, those expenses that Karen's referring to.
Not those specific ones, but I'm.
Anticipating.
My feeling is that things will quickly take their place. That's, that's a polite way to say it, but America is very litigious in nature.
You can at least have a closer lawyer.
What?
We could at least have a closer lawyer that doesn't require so much mileage, perhaps. Less than three-hour drive, just throwing it out there.
We do, we do a lot of Zoom calls as well, so it's not all C time. Like today, we had a negotiation and it was Zoom, so.
May I ask one more question?
Karen, you can ask as many as you like.
Thank you, Mr. Hayman. So I remember that in, back to the revenue side.
Okay.
One of the issues that we were having and why we had the field was because we couldn't do anything with the field. We couldn't rent it out. There was, there was no ability. And with the new field, I would have expected to see that, that revenue line to have gone up a tad. Is that because of still COVID and the anticipation or am I just remembering that wrong?
You're not, you're not remembering that wrong. I did not raise the rent on fields because one, the overall number, it's not a large number, but, and I haven't, I haven't experienced a normal facilities rental yet. I know we not only rent the field, but we rent gymnasiums and things of that nature. And that just has not happened.
Right.
So, so I didn't want to be overly optimistic.
Playing it safe.
And I wanted to, like I said, it's a small number. The number is.
And that, I mean, that's a perfectly awesome answer. And that, I mean, that's a perfectly awesome answer.
So the rent, the rentals are secondary and elementary, $11,000. So on purpose, I didn't want to anticipate that, and in fact, I consciously left those, that section alone, so we could concentrate on what I think should garner the most focus is the state aid and the local amount needed. So, but if.
Thank you.
I, I hope, with a full year of Cameron, you remember last year, it was at the end of the year, hopefully, we'll get more people using it. I know it's been talked about, and then we're going to take a look at the, there is actual policy, and not to bog this down, but we'll be taking a look at that policy on how we rent and how much we rent, and we'll be taking a look at that very soon.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a process for coming back to the budget at a certain point to see what the actuals were versus what was projected? Because I appreciate having some static lines in the budget helps with the budgeting process, and a lot of these are small items that aren't going to fluctuate too much. But we talked a few meetings ago about hoping and driving for increased tuition students, and if we had 40 new tuition students, that would be a lot of new revenue in that line. Or, you've mentioned transportation wasn't a typical year, and it's a flat $2 million budget. What happens if the, where, there's a variance of several hundred thousand dollars in these items? Does it kind of just get shuffled into the pool again, or? And I would also just be curious to, to see it adopted, and then actuals next to it, just to have an idea of how close we are.
Well, you're in luck. Tonight, you're going to be asked to review and pass two months' financial statements.
Tonight?
Tonight.
You're quick.
You're going to see Decembers and Januaries. We always run a few months behind, because billing always runs behind, so there's no way to, you think of a normal business, and you can tidy up a month and two weeks and say, month's done. It's not the case in the school system, unfortunately, drives me a little crazy, but that's the reality. So, the first three pages of the packet for the financial statements are what you're talking about. You'll see the revenue done on a little page in a quarter, maybe, and then there's one page we're going to get to in a little bit, that has the expenses by division, which is the way we typically focus on it as a school committee. And by division, we have the budget, well, we have the actual expenditures, we have some encumbrances on the actual financial statements, and we show you what the budget is for the year and how much is left.
Sounds good.
So we get a feel for, like, if transportation, as you get a little more familiar, you know, where's transportation? Well, it's in people's services, so your eyes will probably go to the people's service line. That's where, for the most part, nurses are in transportation. You'll go there and check it out, and if there's $2 million of the budget's transportation, you'll see quickly if that's going awry. So, that's.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question, too. For, with the breakdown of the different schools, I'm confused why Abraham Lincoln and Bangor High have a decrease in that, in that breakdown. Can you explain that, please?
I will. What is the pleasure of the committee? I, this is the first reading, that we have details, we're barely into the categories. After this, will be the divisions that you're speaking of now. How much do you want me to methodically go through the categories before I get to the divisions?
Member Soret.
I, I just wonder if it's, it's a good opportunity to bring up the, the idea of having some type of workshop between now and the second reading, because I feel like there's many questions. I, I have some questions that would require us to get down into the weeds on some, some of the school spending. So anyway, that's just a thought I had when, when you mentioned that, how much detail.
And I, I have actually recommended that, and I would suggest to have a workshop, because I know several of the school committee members have reached out to me with specific questions, and we, I mean, we can sit here all night, you know, going through this, but I think a workshop would be very.
We can do it.
I think it's, I would recommend it as a chair, and if that's the, the, you know, agreement of my school committee members, my fellow committee members, I think we should go ahead and do that.
I'll pile on to that. I, I think, you know, most of us work all day, and we got this budget yesterday, which, you know, I know the timeline is, is crunched, but I, I personally have not had time to do it justice at all, to even, you know, begin to know what questions to ask. And, you know, even, I'm thinking about the financial statements, and part of, I think, what might help us to understand the, the budget when it comes around, is maybe when you present us with financial statements, you could take some time to go through each of them, and just give us highlights, and, you know, that might be places, times that we could ask during the year for questions about the budget and what the different categories are. That's just an idea that, that I have, because it's, it's a lot of numbers.
It is a lot of numbers. Any one of you is free to ask financial statement questions at any time. We're back in the cycle where we have the budget fairly put together, we're going to tweak it, as you know, over the next week, but you should be seeing a financial statement per month from the rest of the year. So you're getting two tonight.
Sure, Austin, I would suggest that, you know, Jerry's put a lot of work in this, if we let him continue through the report, we could certainly set up a workshop prior to the next meeting, maybe the same day to answer questions. And I just want to, you know, there was a workshop last year, I researched this prior to that, there really was not, but I think that a lot of good questions are being asked, so I would like, and Jerry's done a really good job to have a flat budget, even with the 2.8% increase from the state. If we would allow him to finish his report, if there's any further questions, let's let him take those, and then let's schedule a workshop, maybe the same day as the meeting prior to.
Any, any questions about that, or? I know Member Soret is thinking.
Yes, go ahead.
So, we would have the workshop immediately prior to the second reading?
That's one thing I'm suggesting, I'm certainly open to whatever the pleasure of the school committee is, but I think that would give you time to review, you could ask a few more questions tonight if you'd like, but I think, once he goes through this, it'll add a little bit more clarity to, I think he was only about a third of the way through.
I would just, I would be a little concerned that then we wouldn't have, there wouldn't be any time to potentially make changes as a result of that workshop. If the workshop was immediately prior, yeah.
Yeah, I can have Lori throw some dates out to see if the committee would be on board, and we'll see if we can schedule a time to get everybody to come in.
Thank you.
I know that's a date that's on your calendars, that's why I was suggesting that.
Yeah, if we're going to have a, just thinking about the mechanics, if we're going to have a second reading on Wednesday, the 30th, I really would request Tuesday and Wednesday to get it finalized after hearing your input, maybe on Monday, to.
Monday.
Yeah.
To get your questions concerned, and if you have, if you look at legal and say, no, I want to be a little more conservative, that's great, give me a, a number, and you'll see some history, and we'll drop it to whatever you would like, that's just an example, but it'll give you a little time to do that.
So if I may, Director Heyman, if it's the will of the school committee, would you be available on Monday, Monday evening, for a workshop? So that way, we give you ample time.
I will make myself available.
Does that give you enough time, if we meet Monday with the school committee?
Yes, to do, do changes Tuesday and Wednesday.
Okay, perfect. Is that, is that good for everybody?
I believe so.
Let it happen.
Okay.
So we.
We'll have Lori send out an invite tomorrow.
Sure. What time would that be?
What time? I'm, I'm available, I'm available 5:00 PM on.
If Lori sends it out tomorrow, that's fine.
Are you, do you know the, the dates of the, I don't know if the city is using the chamber.
We could meet in another location here, though, I think we can figure it out.
That's what I was worried about.
We'll find a location.
They, they do a lot of Mondays.
Yes, that's true.
Maybe we could go back there.
We could go in the back.
Sure.
Okay. Okay.
You have a lovely, it is more comfortable, nice chairs.
Yeah, we'll figure that out, Monday at 5:00.
Sure.
Yes, good.
And I'll, I've never had anybody, I'm quite pleased, people want to get into the way down in the, in the weeds of the budget, this is.
We have a lot of math lovers here and number lovers.
That is absolutely fine with me. So is it your pleasure for me to just continue and?
Sure.
Answer a few questions as we go and prepare for Monday? Special education breaks down to several other categories, and Sarah, to your point, the benefits look a bit odd compared to the salaries, and that's the same reason, I will further scrub that to ensure that's exactly what's going on.
Thank you.
The salaries are, once again, as I stated earlier, the result of normal wage adjustments, but also the positions that we added, we added a teacher to ed techs and a social worker. Next, we have our other instructor, which co-curricular, extracurricular, and summer school, those type of expenses. The budget comparison to the other two that we saw are quite small, the, the overall increase is only $55,000. Supplies and some wages, some modest increases, nothing that would necessarily catch your eye and cause further concern, but I will have all the detail there for you. So the next section is student support, this is guidance library, IT, and about four other different sections listed there. If you look at the numbers, the wages went up $283,000, normal wage adjustments there, but also a full-time guidance counselor is in there, we've talked about that already a couple of times, but that is in there. The other categories, there are only minor, really, changes there, a few thousand here or there. System administration, that's the superintendent's office, the business office, which we've hit on a few times. This is just looking at it in detail. So if you look at the dollars, you can see the, the salaries going up $233,000, that's the normal wages and adjustments, plus the, the dual cross-training that we want to employ next year. The other categories, the variances are quite small. School administration, this is the principals and the clerical at, at the schools, and the, the salary increase, $69,000, benefits $20,000, the other ones are very small, the overall increase in this category is $99,679. And we've gone over transportation, so I won't stop on it, I kept it at $2 million. Interested in seeing what a normal year is, getting back to normal with full slate of bus drivers. As you know, we don't actually own the buses or employ the bus drivers, we contract that service out. Next section is facilities maintenance, which is just like it says, with some capital money in there, and custodials are also in this section. The, the benefits are doing the same thing as they have in the other sections. I, I need to make sure that it's looking at a higher estimate from prior year. Utilities went up $237,000, I've hit on that a couple of times already tonight, and monocapital, that's that, compared to last year, where that $862,000 is, so if you flip that out, monocapital actually went up a little bit, but we didn't have that extra appropriation last year. Debt service, I've already gone over, all the capital projects we've either completed or in the process of completing, or brought them all before you for votes, approval, brought them all before the city for the same. So this is what I estimate to be the first half of the increase, to get those six projects done. And all other, it's, if you look at the detail, it's the transfer we send to the food service program to support lunches for $25,000 a year, and the lunch aids, and there's only, it's a very small budget, modest increase of a little over $5,000. So from here, we look at the same numbers by division, and that's how you see it on your monthly packet, that you're going to talk about later tonight, two of them, actually. So we divided up between the school committee, all the way through debt service, again, touching every school in the middle. Once again, special education is its own section, it doesn't vary the same numbers as the state category. Let's flip to the Bangor High, I believe you mentioned that negative number, that's that $862,000 being reversed from last year. So without that, Bangor High budget would have gone up modestly, but it would have gone up. So that's what's driving that.
Jerry, can I bother you quickly?
What?
I am certain this, you told us this last week, but community school, that line item, number 29 on that spreadsheet, is that the private schools in the region that receive funding from us?
No, the community schools is an after-school program.
Okay, thank you. I just, the increases are sharp, but now it's not, now that I know what it is, it makes sense.
It's an after-school program and alternative education?
Yep.
We, I, I mentioned earlier that we proposing adding an alternative education science teacher, which will get that unit with all the pieces that that population really wants, that's been lacking for a few years.
Thank you.
Yep.
Jerry, can I ask another category question?
Sure.
Bangor High Athletics is a separate line item?
Yes.
In the proposed budget?
Yes.
Is that required by state law to have that separated out like that? I mean.
No.
Okay.
The state law requires the categories we've gone over.
Okay, okay. So I'm, I'm curious how that fits in with the other instruction? Because other instruction includes co-curricular activities, but is the Bangor High Athletics part of that?
No.
So those are two separate, so the co-curriculars do not include high school athletics?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So the, it's Division 51, it's right, right in the middle, right under Bangor High, has a budget of, proposed budget of $964,000 right now, which is an increase of $39,000, which is 4.25%. And as you can see, that percentage fits in a little higher, a little lower than a lot of the other divisions. This division makeup is what I inherited when I came on board, this is what's been presented to the school committee for probably decades, and that's how the main focus of the financial statements are presented. And only for the audit and for the state do we flip the money back to the state categories, because each one of these obviously would have, all the schools would have regular instruc- instruction, for instance. There'd be a big chunk of their schools. So the state looks at it one way and we look at it in another.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
So we'll obviously go into as much depth as you want on Monday with any one of these divisions. I'll have the breakdown, what I brought with me tonight, not knowing what was going to be asked. I did the biggest increases and the biggest decreases by division, but it wasn't, it was all divisions, it wasn't segmented by each one of these lines, but, so I didn't quite know what to expect tonight. So if you have any questions that you want answered, I will try to do it tonight or we can, you can get them to me anticipating Monday night. Okay?
It would probably be, I think it would make most sense for the information to come at the Monday meeting, but something I'm interested in knowing is current staff, support staff levels, particularly at the Down East School and Vine Street School, particularly social workers, school nurse and guidance counselor, what is the current staffing at, of those three positions at those two schools? I would, that would be important information for me to have at my fingertips at the Monday meeting.
Well, I can give you some of that right now.
Oh, great.
I don't have it all specifically by school, but I have a lot of it. To answer one of your questions, the, we have five nurses in our operating budget, which you're reviewing now, and there's also a nurse that's being funded by our COVID money. It's for a total of six. And where they're spread out, I cannot answer. We have other people that could do so, but I'll get into your other question a little bit. I anticipated us looking at special education a little more thoroughly. So these are the highlights. The ed techs, department-wide, we have 89 ed techs in the system. I do have it summarized by school. Let's see. Looks like 17 are geared towards Down East. What was the other school you said?
Vine Street.
I have nine on the list for Vine Street and this is what I have in the computer system. This is not the gospel, the gospel is probably sitting right over there, but this is a pretty, this is what we believe to be true at this moment. So there's 89 ed techs. We have .8 for behavioral analyst, 4.9 FTEs for occupational therapist. We have six tenths of a physical therapist. We now have eight social workers, which is an increase of probably three since I've come on board. Each year, we seem to ratchet that up another notch and in the budget with the extra state appropriation is an extra social worker for a total of eight. 9.7 FTEs for language, speech and language. And then there's 1.8 FTEs for speech and language pathologist. Don't ask me what that is, but it sounds very important. And teachers, I have a little over 42 teachers in special education. So we have a good amount of staff covering our schools and I have it broken out by school.
What about psychologists, Jerry? Psychologists?
Did I not say psychologist?
I didn't hear it, but.
This is behavior analyst?
They're out of local entitlement. They're all.
Thank you. So local entitlement is a grant, so grants are outside of what you're seeing from local entitlement to Title I, Title II, COVID, all of those are separate, funded and reported and not part of the, sort of the operating budget that the state supports through local, through appropriations.
Okay. Do we know what the FTE equivalent is?
I did not bring that. Three.
And these are tenured positions? The eight social workers, all the FTEs?
Mm-hmm.
They're tenured?
Tenured, you mean?
Meaning that they, we won't lose their services.
Not if the budget's passed with those dollars. And so far, the presentation has an additional social worker in it to bring it to eight.
Okay.
So, and like I said, when I started, it was probably around five and we've ratcheted up a whole one or half one and we've kind of like a slight increase every year.
You've worked really hard to get those.
Yeah.
Member sectors.
Which, I mean, which makes sense when you look at the huge increases in special ed. So what I would greatly appreciate on Monday is like, kind of not, not being able to do a deep dive into, I know we raised wages in order to hire ed techs.
Yes.
Like, have we hired those ed techs that were empty? Are we not filling in order to, like, where is the formula on that when we look at this on Monday? So when you say we have 89 ed techs, did we have 79 to, you know, last year's budget and now we're adding 10? So.
The 89 ed techs include all the vacant positions.
Awesome.
We've had vacant positions for, since I've been here.
Yeah.
There's always a need for a certain level of support. We've been unable to reach it, as you know, sitting through negotiations, we're hoping to get there. So my report to you is there's well over a dozen open positions in ed techs. We've added two new ones from last year's level in this budget.
So the numbers that you're hearing are what we're projecting with this budget?
Yes.
Whether they're vacant or they're not, we are, to answer your question, we are filling jobs thanks to the work that happened with the negotiating team, so.
Yes.
I know you led that, but we are filling positions daily, so we seem to have a lot more interest now, but this budget where we've actually, I just want to reiterate, Jerry's worked hard on this and.
Yeah.
We have 1.4 million more from the state, so we're actually going up 2.8, even though it would be a flat budget for our taxpayers. But we have added a number of positions and he can review those again Monday for you if you'd like.
That's wonderful.
Mostly in the area of mental health, I would suggest.
Thank you.
So.
Think you're on page 30, if that helps.
I am. So page 30 through 32 is taking every one of those line items and talking about it in a little more detail. And I've mentioned most of the significant changes in those particular areas, whether it's new FTEs or some other anomaly, such as utilities or something of that nature. So you're hearing the same comments again, the special ed, since it's the same section, it's the same comment. So if you read it in the category section, it's the same thing. So that's the next three pages. And we, I'll have the data so we can dive as deep as you want to any division on Monday. The next page I'd like to focus on is page 33. It's the state versus local funding. And this is just another way to look at the first revenue sheet that we reviewed. The left-hand column shows the state aid. And if you recall, Superintendent Taggart just reiterated the increase of 1.443 million dollars, the state aid. You can clearly see that on page 33. And currently, we are asking for no increase to local revenue at this time. So that's a, and over the years, you can see, a few years went down and most of the years went up, of course. And last year, if you recall, the local revenue, if you're wondering why it's negative 500,000, you recall back to the extra appropriation last year, we voted to pass some money on to the city to help alleviate any tax burden. That was our contribution to that. So that's why it's negative 500,000. And then you get some graphs, you have the state subsidy, this is the piece that, this is the state aid. You can see this is a nice graph going up at the end, we like to see that. And once again, we're a little over the $24 million. Have it memorized it totally. Think I need a bigger surface. Yeah, it's a little over $24 million, $81,000. The next page is the percentage of that state aid compared to the total budget. So that also is trending up nicely. It's over 44% now. That's a pretty good number. It's trending, definitely trending in the right direction and as you can see, that's the highest percentage since this graph began back in 1999, 2000. So it's a long time. So we like, we like the trending. The next couple are two years' worth of pie graphs, fiscal '22, which we're currently in, and then fiscal '23. And they'll, they break up the budget and show you increases, decreases. You can once again see the biggest wedge of the money in regular instruction and special education and the smaller pieces being the other ones, but it takes the same numbers you've seen before and this gives you a pie graph visualization of it. We had this one in here at the last, at the draft, but it's the local area of mill rates. You want to see where Bangor compares to the local, a lot of the local towns and cities. This is, we're near the top, not the top, but, so we have a pretty high mill rate right now compared to, compared to SANS, but obviously we're a service center, so that's, no get away from some of that. And the last one we had in there, you also saw last time. Sorry, IT. It's no coming back from that. It's a, it's a page of funding for the charter schools in the state of Maine. It shows you how many students are in those and the amount of dollars sent to those schools. If I could click forward, which I can't. I killed it, I think. There's several pages, every year, part of the. Really? Oh, you're good. Every year, we have, we work with a competent associates at an engineering firm, the administration and the principals to put together a capital maintenance and improvement plan for each one of the schools. That's what you'll see here. Starts off with some background information. I, you can stop briefly at page 45, if you've ever been curious how old our schools are and how big they are. There's a nice little facilities background section there. Which is. Right there. If you go in further to the packet on page 47, it starts to look like this. And what this section is, starting in 2017, it, we do a lot of projects in the summer with available dollars that we can squeeze out of our operating funds. And this is a list of them, I list them by school and a brief description of what the project was and the costs. So it's kind of a neat look back on what's being done at each of our schools. So there's two pages of that. Then you get into the school by school. What we do, it starts off Abraham Lincoln. I'm not going to stop at each school, I'll use Abraham Lincoln as an example. It has 11 items totaling $1,285,000. If you look at the left-hand column on any one of these pages, it has a P1 through a P3. What that's telling you is the order of importance for P1 being equivalent to now or in the next year, it's recommended that those items be addressed and so on and so forth through P5. A lot of the items on this list will be addressed and I need to get the final list from the engineering and I add my own little legend to it and I'll, I can share it with you. What I do is show you what we've accomplishing with our COVID grants. So as a, since we're on Abe Lincoln, if you look at the number two, the HVAC improvements, the number three, the replacing of some HVAC that was made in 1973. Number five, the administration ventilation area. Number six, HVAC controls. And number eight, the replacement of the boiler. All that is going to be done with COVID money. So we've, over the last year, I've come to you a few times and we've gone over the COVID list and we will continue to do so as we spend it, but our intent is to utilize that golden ticket to do these and we actually have penciled in, depending on price, of course, that we could potentially get rid of almost every one of our HVAC projects on all 10 schools. So that's good news. So keep that in mind as you go through and I won't have time by Monday, but I'll go through and I'll create my little legend and tell you what's taken care of. I believe there's a couple on here, really large numbers that are the grant projects, the bonding that we previously talked about. So don't be alarmed when you see. My papers are thoroughly disshuffled at this point. I was going to show you an example. A good example is on page 55, which is Fruit Street. Number two is the heating system for 3.2 million. You're well aware, we're, we have a contractor and we're ready to go in June for the Vine Street system. We have Fruit Street already designed and paid for and we'll be addressing that next summer. So it is $3.2 million, but you shouldn't concern yourself about that one because we'll, I'll come before you and we'll discuss bonding on that one as well, but not for about a year. So the last page is the articles. If I flip through all the schools, if you have any concerns about any of the projects, we can get more detailed information on what it's actually talking about. But at the end, this is the articles. When we refine the budget next Wednesday and we vote on a second reading, I'll be asking you to read these in one at a time and vote on them. And if you look at them, they're, they mirror the state categories. The state's looking for these articles to support, starting off with regular instruction, special education. special education, other instruction, student staff and support, it's all the categories we've gone over here tonight. So we'll be going over those and reading them in, but not tonight. At the end of the articles, I want to point out Article 12. That deals with adult education. Adult education is not part of the school budget. It's got some grants and its tuition. But our piece, and why it's here, is we've chosen to support the adult education for 200,000 again. So we need to state that in an article. And there's the number I was looking for earlier, Article 13. This is the vocational education, the UTC, if you will. They have a budget of 318,000 that has to do with adult education at their shop. That is not part of us, that is part of them. However, they reach out and they want folks sending schools to support it for $60,847,000. And they've determined our portion, based on usage, is 18,000. Well, round up $23. And that funding will come from not the operating budget, but the resolution for the City of So in conclusion, finally, a lot of talking. To reiterate, some points already made. The budget indeed did go up 1.443 million. We utilized, hopefully wisely, all the additional state aid provided to us. We've added nine positions, and I'd like to go over them again. Special education is for a teacher, a social worker, two ed techs. Sort of department-wide, we've added that guidance counselor, and then split the time up amongst six or seven different schools, so everybody gets a little more. The business office, we talked about, an additional accountant. The community schools, that's the alternative education science teacher we've talked about. People's service, we've added ELL teachers to that. And Fruit Street also has an ed tech. So that's what we've, along with normal increases, salary and wage adjustments, and utility allowances for what's going on in the world. So that's sort of a highlight of the budget. If anybody has any additional questions, I'll answer them now, or feed them to me between now and Monday, or we'll get into in-depth on Monday.
Yeah. And we thank you very, very much for all your hard work and, you know, deep dive in this, helping us just clarify a lot of these questions. So thank you. And I know Member Sprague had a question or comment.
Sure. Thanks. Yeah, I just want to thank you for the presentation. That was great. It's the first one of these I've been through on this side of things, and I've never seen that graph of the state subsidy before, the percentage. That was interesting, and I just liked the way you laid everything out, division by division here with the highlights. A couple of things, you don't have to answer right now, and they might be questions for Superintendent Taggert as much as you, but I, a lot of this, this is in framing, right? Is it a flat budget, or is it a $1.4 million increase? And different people will see different things based on what they want to see. But what I'm interested in are a couple of things. One, from a non-quantitative standpoint, what's the, what's the story of this budget? And you kind of got into it a little bit, summarizing the staff changes, but I'm just interested, and I think this probably is for Superintendent Taggert for next week, but how is this budget meeting our goals as a committee? And how are we allocating resources to meet the goals that we have expressed? I think that you hinted around the edges, and I, and I respect that your presentation is primarily quantitative-driven, and some of this is, a lot of this is non-quantitative, what I'm saying, but I, we've all expressed interest in better mental health services, social work, and I can see how that is built in. But I would love to probably have Superintendent express the, the story of the budget, so to speak. I'm curious about what's missing. Are there things that we're on the chopping block that, just to make a well-informed decision about whether this is the appropriate budget, and I'm certainly very inclined to support it, but natural curiosity and just to be well-informed about the decisions we're making, are there things that we, like the wish list, like things we want to have in there that are not, because we're trying to hold the line? And I do very much respect the, the principle of trying to hold the line for the property taxpayers. I think that that's an important consideration. And then lastly, probably also for the superintendent, again, not necessarily for tonight, but we've talked a lot about Downey School, we had that workshop, and I'm just, I realize the plans for what we want to do in the Downey School in the neighborhood are probably not fully formed yet, but are there fiscal notes attached to that goal of focusing on that school a bit? So.
I can answer some of that now, which might help you for, for Monday, Member Sprague. You know, I think Jerry mentioned, and if I've got my numbers right, I think there's nine new positions. Many of those are related to special ed or mental health. And I would tell you that part of the reason that I'm supporting the budget that Jerry has put together, and we've worked on together, is it does give us some growth in that area. The one thing he mentioned too was the science position. I want to clarify that too, from visiting the high school, we have a number of students, and this could be COVID-related, some that just do not like to be around other students. They don't like to be in a crowded hallway. They're receiving their instruction to reach graduation. And Jerry alluded that we've had, we haven't had a complete program for, I think, a period of six or seven years. We've offered English, math, social studies, but no science. So helping students graduate and to increase our graduation rate is a part of that one. When you talk about overall vision, the high school is doing some really good work with grad rate. We were at 82% last year. We're projecting that we're going to increase a number, and I don't want to say it out loud to jinx it, but I, we are doing some things in that direction. Another part of this where I'm recommending a flat budget is, since the time I started here, I know that Ray Finney was brought on board for communications, Dana for diversity, equity, and inclusion. We also have brought on Justine Cohn, who is working on, as a grad coach. We've also brought on Julie Kimball, who's working with our, as our mentoring coordinator. I'm missing one position, Kathy, which one am I missing? Oh, a new ELL teacher too. And we are expecting, when you look big vision, to receive through Catholic Charities, some folks, some new students that we are very excited about getting. We don't know if they will be Afghan students, we don't know if it's going to be Ukraine, but we are the next spot that is going to get students from an international flair, and we're excited about that as well. So that would be the addition of the third ELL teacher, English language learners. And I would tell you that the two of those five positions are the mentoring and the grad coach are two-year funded positions, and the people in those positions know that. In my opinion, they're both highly talented from the time I've spent with them. So they'll be sought out at other places. And I think in two years, we're going to be coming back to you, and we're going to ask taxpayers to pony up, to help us to keep these positions. I don't ever want to be greedy, but we've had COVID dollars that are probably unheard of. So if there was a time to keep a flat budget, this would be it. But I do want everybody to keep in mind, and I keep reiterating, it's 1.4 more and more. Jerry's got the numbers better than I do, but it's also a 2.8% increase. But I think we're increasing in the areas that we should. To Member Soret's question, we are looking, and Kristi Babman, Director Babman, can talk more about this Monday, but we are looking specifically at the two schools that you mentioned. What are their social worker, how long of a period of day do they have that? And we're also looking at nurses. We do have five, so I think we are in good shape with nurses. We picked up a fifth, well, a sixth one through COVID dollars. Whether that will extend, I don't know. Probably depends on how things go with COVID. But we are also working on tele-nursing. Director Babman is filling out a grant for that as well. So I think as far as nursing and social workers, we're in very good shape, and we're increasing. So that's kind of my vision as of tonight. I can probably give you more Monday, but that's what I'm thinking.
Could have saved him an hour and a half if you just did that. 7:05.
The, one question you asked that he didn't address. Very quickly, how did we get to even budget from last time? We asked the administrators to go back and look for 10% cuts, and what they're looking for is the, the supply type expense lines, not personnel, that they did a great job, and they cut about $200,000 out of 10 schools. So it was modest cuts. We chose not to fill a very, in my opinion, important maintenance position. We, there's a additional custodial position at Bangor High that we're not filling. There was a teacher at Bangor High that was part of the reduction, and one ed tech out of, we still have 89. So, and besides that, we, scrubbing the data, we found it was a blessing for budget cuts. We found a couple custodial positions that were listed twice, and we have no idea why. But they were easy things to fix, and they helped us on our journey to even budget. So all of that together is how we got there.
Thank you again.
All right.
And one question I would love to ask, and this is for Monday, is if we were to cut any services, I would like to know exactly what service would be cut. Just kind of transparently, if I can get an answer to that, please. What services or whatever it may be that might be the first thing that, to go?
Okay.
Please, and thank you.
I will investigate that a little beyond my scope, but.
Thank you.
I know some good people that can probably help me with that answer.
Maybe on this committee would like that. And I also want to ask if Caroline has any questions from a student perspective. I know this is a lot to take in. Okay, all right. Member Mundell.
Yeah, I want to thank you, Jerry, for all the work that you've done. It's a ton of work, obviously, and I, we're grateful. Kind of to piggyback on what you were just saying and what Ben was asking for, maybe at the workshop, if we could have like an overview of, like, what is the budget process? Like, how do you collaborate with administrators, with teachers? What's the communication mechanism for determining what the needs of each building are? You said that you go, you went to the administrators and asked them for cuts, but I'm just wondering if there's a process where you go to them and say, what do you need? And let's start there, and.
We do start there. We did start there this year, but we will expand on that Monday.
Okay.
So the draft budget that you saw about a week ago, it blurs, but the last meeting was the administrators out of the box, this is what I would like for a budget by division. So in essence, they're answering the question, what do they want?
Okay, great.
And from there, you usually don't see that step. We usually, in-house, we analyze it and try to come up with a reasonable amount for a budget, and tweak it down and present it to you as the first reading, which you're seeing tonight. So we kind of added a step this year compared to most.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, okay, Member Sretz.
One more question.
One more question.
Actually, mine's more of a comment. Thank you. You know, we all, we all kind of joke that, you know, I was there with all of the contract negotiation stuff.
We were.
It, it was, I mean, this has been unprecedented. I know we're all tired of that couple of years. You know, we've watched teachers do some incredible things over the past couple of years, and I think that part of this budget reflects the work that we put in to recognize those teachers through the pay raises. And then also, you know, with inflation and having a really difficult time filling a lot of jobs. I mean, a lot of this budget is increases that we really had to implement as a school system in order to remain competitive, combined with, I mean, half is going to special ed, which is just, it's, it's amazing to me, like, half of our instructional budget. And, you know, that's something that we all really, I mean, as a society and as a school system needing to look at. And I'm just so incredibly impressed by the work that you and your team and the principals and administrators have done to put this together, and the fact that we're even contemplating having a close-to-flat budget. I, I, I wish that we could have every single taxpayer that wants to complain go, look what we've done! So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you again. Thank you so much. And with that, can I get a motion to accept this first reading?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Motion passes 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And next, two informational items. We have a March 18, 2022, in-service update.
Assistant Superintendent Kathy Harris-Smedberg will provide an update on the March 18, 2022
This will be a whole lot easier. The Penobscot River Educational Partnership, known as PREP, hosted their second annual virtual conference on March 18 for approximately 1,400 educators, representing 23 schools and four local colleges and universities. Faculty were allowed to choose what offerings they wanted to attend, so they were able to tailor their day based upon their interests. Dr. Greta Pia, founder and CEO of Diversity Matters, and Dr. Joanne Kason, also of Diversity Matters, were the keynote speakers and presented the Journey of Equity. This keynote was built on the work they provided last year. There were approximately 90 different presenters and over 180 varied sessions for participants to choose from. Additionally, mental health first aid sessions were provided for educational technicians. Topics were wide in scope and included technology, student engagement, wellness, STEM, literacy, math, outdoor learning spaces, teacher clarity, homeschool relationships, adaptive leadership, social emotional learning, and equity learning. Additionally, within district, we work on curriculum and content, provided trainings and coding, how to use a math diagnostic tool, and worked on academic standards. Feedback was overwhelmingly positive, and faculty really appreciated the opportunity to choose their learning. Our alliance with PREP allows for professional development days like this, where the variety and depth of trainings would be beyond what we could offer internally.
Thank you.
And next, we have Superintendent Academic Excellence Award, I believe.
Each year, the superintendent of schools recognizes our highest achieving scholars in the senior and sophomore classes. These students elect to take the most challenging academic courses that we offer and maintain a grade point average that is outstanding. For seniors, who we are announcing tonight, a minimum of 10 honors or advanced placement courses must be taken with an overall average GPA of 4.0 or higher. The award is added to college/university, college or university application, and is recognized at graduation. 39 students, students, will receive the superintendent's Academic Excellence Award for 2022. Assistant Superintendent Kathy Harris-Smedberg will read the names into the record.
So I am really pleased to report these 39 students, seniors. I did want to add a little bit more to what Mr. Taggert said, where the criteria is the 4.0 grade point average. I would tell you that eight recipients earned a grade point average of 4.8 or higher. Additionally, there were 17, there was an average of 17 honors or advanced placement courses, and 11 of those students took 20 or more. I have to say that the academic accomplishments of this group are absolutely staggering. They're just amazing. This list represents 13% of our senior class, and in alphabetical order, and thanks to Mr. Principal Butler, who provided me with some help with the names, and I do apologize in advance if I still mess up, but I did practice. So we have Dorothy Barron, Catherine Barron, Joshua Bohm, Trey Bruasa, Darby Connor Self, Quinn DeLassio, Sylvia Davids, Maya Alcadi, Atticus Foster, Winifred French, Ania Ganesh, Virginia Hunt, Koziso Kuchu Ifedge, Liam Jalbert, Michaela Kendall, Isabel Kidwell, Jenna Klesurets, Jasmine Knapp, Natalie Krebs, Lee Ladd, Colby Levitt, Ian Keb Lee, Natalie Liliav, Daniel McCarthy, India Moon, Ogetchi Obi, Frederick Oldenburg, Elizabeth Oldenburg, Olivia Oldfield, Charlie Pacoam, John Putnam, Simon Sokolow, Zachary Spring, Cadence Stockford, Carly Sweeney. Carly Sweeney, Nathan Tardy, Eden Tomlinson, Colton Trish, and Analea Whitman. And congratulations to these students. Amazing.
Congratulations to all those students. Next, we have report of retirements.
Yes, I'm reporting the following retirements. Karen Bagley, special education teacher, William S. Cohen School. Lisa Brooker, kindergarten teacher, Vine Street School. Deborah Friedman, Title I teacher, Mary Snow, 14th and private schools.
Thank you. Next, we move on to business action items. We have action items, and then we have minutes for the regular meeting of March 9th, 2022.
I'm recommending approval of the draft minutes of the March 9th, 2022 regular school committee meeting.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion passes six zero.
On to financial reports, and we have a December 2021 financial report.
I'm recommending approval of the December 2021 financial report.
Motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
Next, we have a January 2022 financial report.
I'm recommending approval of the January 2022 financial report.
Motion, please. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
On to personnel, and we have extra duty assignments.
I'm recommending committee approval of the following extra duty assignments for the 2021-2022 school year. Rayanne Berry, first-year assistant coach, girls lacrosse, Bangor High School. Simon Perry, first-year assistant boys lacrosse, Bangor High School. Peekaboo Sierra Mauer, softball coach, William S. Cohen School.
And can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
And next, we have a second reading of policies. We have revised policy ICA 2022-2023 school calendar.
I'm recommending second reading of the following revised policies. Revised policy ICA 2022-2023 school calendar.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes, absolutely. I didn't see that in our packet.
It's at the very end.
It's the very end. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Could you just tell us real quick what the changes were? It was...
Yes. One of the things we did is we worked with the BEA and our teacher advisory committee, and the first, the teacher academy was about eight days before the first day of teaching, and they wanted to move it a little closer to the start of the school year. So, we agreed to that collaboratively.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, member Siret?
I was just curious. I know, and it seemed this year, we didn't have, knock on wood, we didn't have many missed days due to weather, but I feel like two years ago, we implemented a policy where there were no, no snow days, right? We had remote days when we had weather cancellations, and the justification was that we could then pinpoint a day in June that would be the five. Is that policy still intact?
What we did with the calendar this year is we did allow five snow days, and the decision was made to go ahead and do traditional snow days. Part of that was a result of COVID and just the way that people are, kind of, we have struggled for the last two years. We did use three of the days. We have two remaining, knock on wood. We'll see what the weather is for the next month or so. But we will be school and two days early this year. We have allowed the five days for next year. If it works out perfectly, school will end on a Friday. And we did that also collaboratively with the BEA and with our teacher advisory committee. So, we've kind of vetted the whole calendar with them. The one thing they asked for, too, that you probably noticed, is we have three early release days as well, and they line up with the end of the quarter and one right before the mid-year break.
And do I understand correctly, this year and next, if we go beyond five, they become remote days?
That's what we would plan to do, yes. We haven't said that out loud yet, but that's a good question, and that's likely the answer.
Thanks.
Yeah, member Sichters?
I would, I'd like to ask this committee, Superintendent Tager and the BEA, to consider for the future, the far-off future, the teacher in-service day that's currently scheduled for next year on Friday, March 17th. If there's a possibility of moving that forward a couple of weeks or back a couple of weeks, I was fortunate enough this year to be able to take my daughter on a college visit as a junior, and it was great having that day because she didn't miss a day. However, a lot of the universities had school breaks, and when they, a lot of the universities don't do tours, campus tours, when they're on break. And so, we wished that, for the first time I ever thought of it, so just throwing that out there.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, we have...
Oh.
Right, right.
So, that has like all the 22 schools, districts?
And I don't, I don't believe we voted, right?
We still haven't voted, yes. Those were our questions.
Yes, all in favor. I almost passed that.
Okay. Okay, motion passes six zero. Thank you.
And next, we have donations. I believe, member Sichters, it's your turn to read them.
To Vine Street School from Friends of Ashley Mullins, gift cards to local merchants to help provide food and necessities to students and families, having a total dollar value of $250. To Vine Street School from Bangor Savings Bank, winter gear, clothes, and food to support students and families during the winter months, having a total dollar value of $1,100. To James F. Doughty School from George and Mary Wright, a cash donation to support the library, having a total dollar value of $250. With incredible gratitude and thank you to everybody who donated.
And can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you so much. And we have introduction items?
No.
Okay. On to committee updates. Do we have any comments and questions from the committee? Member Luciano.
Well, I just returned from a brief trip to the Mid-Atlantic region and was excited to wake up and see on the news that Philadelphia School District has made a dramatic change in their day. I don't know if anyone has seen this, but as a lot of us know, there's a lot of data showing that teens especially need more sleep, and they're not getting enough. The Philadelphia School District changed the start day for the high schools to 9:00 a.m., and they now go 9:00 to 4:00 every day, and it's made an enormous difference. They got the inspiration from Upper Darby School District, which is a neighboring school district of about 14,000 students. They had a transportation shortage because of COVID, and they had to reevaluate how they would handle both a shortage of drivers and a shortage of workers to facilitate learning. So, that district, which, no disrespect to Upper Darby School District, it's an excellent, diverse place, but notoriously lower graduation rates and higher rates of poverty than the surrounding districts in the suburbs. They've opted for a three-day in-person school day. For the high schoolers, it starts at 9:45 in the morning. They've had the most attendance they've ever had. They've had the highest graduation rates they've ever had. I realize it's a radical concept, but it is a fascinating real-life case study. And I know not everyone wants their high schooler in their house till 9:00 in the morning, but it just opened my eyes to a possibility of students who disengage because of fatigue, honestly. A lot of students sometimes are working at night to help support their families and then have to be up to get on a bus to go to school, and they're not always engaged because they're tired. And I know that sounds silly, but it was just exciting to see such a large place make such an enormous change and the benefits it's already reaping. So, I just wanted to share that. Real-world consequences are cool when they work. So, just wanted to share that with the group.
Thank you. And I know that has been a longstanding debate, so maybe one, you know, we'll debate out someday. Member Mundell?
Yeah, that's really fascinating. I'll just piggyback on that to say that rates of depression also improve greatly the later that kids go to school and high school. So, I know we're on the eastern end of the time zone, so it does get light here earlier, which is nice, but yeah. I think, you know, I think it's something for us to consider, the fact that our high school goes to school earlier than our younger kids, and, you know, something to think about for the long term. Thanks for bringing that.
Member Sichters?
To piggyback on that, if this is something that I, that we have any thought about doing, I think we should take it up at the state level, because one of the challenges is we're, I mean, though we're giant, we're small, and we're dealing with, if we don't get all of the surrounding schools, then all the sports schedules and everything else will be completely messed up. But I think that this would be an incredible thing, because as member Hassanan said, I mean, this has been, what, 15, 16 years that we've been talking about these things. So, maybe, maybe we can all go and talk to our education, you know, our representatives.
I mean, in that, I also, this is just an observation I made moving here from another state. I'm always surprised, I please do not, anyone in this room, throw daggers, at how short our school day is. We in Maine have one of the shortest school days in the country, and I am always surprised by that, because we have such, you know, access to our students, we're so close, and especially in this district with the neighborhood schools, it just, very surprised to see a six-hour day still, even at the high school level. So, you know, I think from a statewide level, increasing that would be great, but that's my personal opinion. So, that's not a fully endorsed thought at all, just throwing it out there. I think six and a half hours is great, but that's just me.
Let's take it up with our reps. Other comments, questions? Okay, so we move on to representatives' reports. Member Sichters?
I am pleased to report that the high school has had their very first meeting to talk about scholarships. So, those are coming along nicely, and they're doing a great job, and I'm really excited to see what, there's a, there is a lot of really generous donors that have given to our schools, and the staff does a really good job really kind of vetting the students and thinking about, thinking about that.
Other representatives' reports? Member Mundell?
Yeah, we have a mental health citizens advisory committee meeting tomorrow at 3:15 via Zoom, and I think maybe we should bring the research on start dates, start times, to that committee, just to look at, kind of look at that research, so.
Any others? And the DEI committee has also met this month, and we are, the four subcommittees are working towards compiling reports that, and recommendations that will be given to the school committee, and hopefully by our retreat, we will have that information to go, go over and decipher. So, I'm excited about the progress that's been made. And next, we're very happy to have Caroline with us today. I've been reading your reports, but we would love to hear it from you personally.
Good evening, everyone. So, you, before I get to the actual student update, I just want to say that back in January, I was accepted into a language learning program that was virtual, but it was a really great opportunity. It was a free class in, like, languages that are imperative to national security. It's through the National Security Language Initiative for Youth. And so, I picked Turkish, because I didn't know what Turkish sounded like, and I wanted to learn about Turkish culture. And so, I was accepted into that program. Unfortunately, the classes interfered with the committee meetings, so I haven't been here for several weeks, but now it's over, and I had a lot of fun doing it, and I'm just really grateful for the school committee's flexibility on my schedule. So, thank you. So, today was a school-wide administration of the SAT. Many juniors engaged in this, and from personal experience, it was very exhaustive, but we expect to get scores in a couple of weeks, maybe three or four. And the next school-wide SAT will be in October of next year. Going back in time, on March 9th, there was a college and job fair at the high school, and I wasn't able to attend, but from what I heard, there was a pretty good turnout, and there were a lot of options for students to look for summer jobs, look for careers after high school, and look at colleges that we're visiting. There were colleges from the Maine system, Hussin, Maine Maritime, EMCC, and some of the businesses that came include Northern Light Health, Chinbro Corporation, the Maine DEP, Bangor Parks and Rec, and Bangor Savings Bank, and so many more. There's a huge need for summer jobs at the Bangor Parks and Recreation, because there's many positions available right now, so hopefully the job fair was useful for recruiting high school students. And in addition, there is going to be a Ukraine fundraiser happening at the high school. There is a huge collaboration among clubs that's really motivated to raise funds to support what's going on for the Ukrainian citizens. They're planning to, so JROTC is making buttons to sell to students. People are volunteering to make baked goods. There's going to be a movie night for students on April 1st, and it's really just to raise a lot of funds so that we can send it to an organization called Sunflowers for Peace, which will help send medical and military supplies overseas. And the word is just getting out around the school, and we hope that we have a huge turnout of students, and it looks like it's really going to be supported, so we're really proud of that. And in addition, I just wanted to give a student perspective on the mask optional policy going on. I thought you might be interested in, like, the climate going on. I would say that it's been really effective. I think students, there haven't been any major conflicts between students or with staff, and I think that most of the students are being very respective of whether an individual chooses to mask or not, and that's a really good thing. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Caroline, and we applaud you on all your achievements, and we're happy to have you back. And next, we don't have any reports, correct? All right, so on to information items, and is it okay to read the March 28th?
Yes, I would add them Monday.
Okay, I have it added here, too. So, we have Monday, March 28th, at 5:00 p.m., probably a workshop, probably at...
We'll set the location.
Somewhere. TBID. Okay, thank you. Wednesday, March 30th, 2022, regular meeting, 7:00 p.m. here in council chambers. Wednesday, April 13th, 2022, regular meeting, 7:00 p.m. in council chambers. Wednesday, April 27th, 2022, regular meeting, 7:00 p.m. council chambers. Wednesday, May 11th, 2022, regular meeting, 7:00 p.m. council chambers. And finally, Tuesday, May 17th, 2022, school committee members retreat, 8:30 to 3:00 p.m. Redmond and Winchell. Last opportunity for questions and comments. Member Siret?
Is it premature? I feel like we used to see on right about this time, the meeting, the joint meeting between the school committee and the city council. Do we know a date for that yet, or is that to be determined?
I think to be determined, but I think you and I were speculating maybe the 12th of April?
12th of April, I believe, we're obligated to present to the city council our budget for the coming year, our proposed budget.
I'll confirm that on Monday, but that's what we believe it would be.
Thanks.
That's the second Monday in the month.
Yeah.
So, is that before the...
No, 11th is the Monday.
11th is the Monday?
Yep.
So, probably the 11th.
Then we change our...
11th.
Okay.
Other comments, questions? Other comments, questions? Members Sitters.
Is there any possibility or thought about inviting city council members to our meeting on Monday? If, just to kind of get their thoughts?
To the workshop?
I mean, I don't know if they had any interest in attending, but I know we've never done it before, but
I would, my preference would be to leave that time for you all, so you can dig into the questions that you need. I know that the city manager has seen our preliminary budget and is pleased with the way things are going, moving along. But I would think that you all would want that time to be able to ask Jerry any questions that you would like.
Monday, so the city council will be having one of
Gotcha.
Oh, they have a meeting that day as well. Yep.
All right. Thanks.
Other comments, questions? Okay. And adjournment. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.